Good morning, welcome to the June 3th Tulare County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand with me as we salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to see some "I voted stickers" out there. We will begin our meeting with Board of Supervisor Matters. Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Memorial Day weekend, I was over in Kennedy Meadows to see those folks over there. It was kind of nice. Nobody threw anything at me. I didn't get any tomatoes thrown or anything, so people seemed to be pretty happy over there, so I enjoyed that very much. Last Friday night, I cooked for the 4H and FFA Awards banquet there at Porterville, and we served over 800 people. A good turnout for that with the parents and getting their thank you letters into all the buyers that purchased their animals, so that was great. On the 27th, we had a conference call with the folks on Lake Success, Glenn Reed. We had Kevin McCarthy's office onboard with us when we were back in DC. We told him we'd really appreciate his help with working on Success Dam, and so they've been there at every conference call with us, along with Debbie Vaughn and Denise Aiken. We talked to, of course, David Whitmore, who's our lobbyist back there. He always is on the conference call with us. And of course Glenn Reed from the Corps, which we do this on a monthly basis, and it seems to be working well. One of the issues that we put on the agenda for the last call was about the property acquisition and the people getting paid, and we were brought up to speed that they will be getting paid within the next three to four months. So I did talk to one of the landowners, and he said, "Well, it looks like maybe there is some light at the end of the tunnel." So here we are, almost well over two years later, and people still haven't been paid for their property, so that was something that we continue to work on. This Friday, I'll be having First Friday Coffee, 7:00. This will be the last of the season with the Chamber. Then at 1:30, I'll be at Terabilla School for their closing luncheon. They always invite me out there, since that is my old school, and I always enjoy that, seeing the teachers and everybody. Then Saturday night, I'll be at the Tulare County Beef Boosters Dinner at Ritchie Ranch. That's where we raise the money to support the beef exhibitors, because it is a very expensive project, and they need all the help they can get. And then Sunday, I'll be at John T. Cruz's. They're going to be presenting him with some different things at Veterans Hall. He's a Vietnam veteran, and of course I'll be there to give him a certificate, and also he'll be getting a Purple Heart, so that's kind of all I have.
Okay, we're going to wait a minute before Supervisor Sheeta does his Supervisor Matters to open up these doors in the back. Go ahead and leave the last one there.
Sorry, you're not going to hear it. They're making too much noise.
Joe, just go leave the last one there. Or not.
We know who's in charge.
I'd also urge everybody to get out and vote, because this is a very critical election, so that's another thing. Everybody needs to get out and vote. I voted about three weeks ago when I first got my absentee ballot, so I know a lot of people that still got their absentee ballots, so they better get them to the polls. Thank you.
Supervisor Sheeta, thank you, by the way.
I had the pleasure on May 23rd to go to the Strathmore High School graduation, and I graduated from Strathmore 48 years ago with a class of 74 people. In 48 years coming forward, we had about 76 students graduate from the same high school. So it was kind of an eye-opener. After all these years, my base, my high school, is the same size as it was when I left it. On Memorial Day, I gave a speech at Hillcrest Cemetery in Porterville. And the two things I stressed is that not only do we appreciate the fallen soldiers, service people, who gave their lives in defense of this country, but we take an oath of office as public officials, and in that oath of office, we state that we will defend the Constitution of the United States and California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Now, our armed forces are definitely, their job is to protect us from the foreign threats. But more importantly, to back up what those men do, is we have an obligation as citizens to stand up against domestic threats. And the only way we can stand up against domestic threats without a gun is to vote. And it's extremely important, especially now, in the time in our country, in our state, that we need to vote. And unfortunately, I didn't get the chance to air this a lot before Election Day, but we have November coming up, and hopefully we'll have a lot more people register and have a lot more interest in the general election. Last night, we had a, well, before that, last week, we had some staff members in from the Rural County Supervisors Association, and I took them around through my district, took them up the Three Rivers, then I took them through the Yocul Valley over to Springville. We stopped in Exeter on our way, and they were impressed with Exeter, with all the murals. They were very impressed. In fact, a couple of them said they'd like to come back, just to spend the day to go through the murals and go to the park. Then we went through Springville, and Porterville, where I showed them our new courthouse. And the last place we stopped was McDermott Center. And I pulled up alongside McDermott, and I says, "You're not going to believe what's inside." And we went inside, we did the whole tour, and they were absolutely amazed that that facility exists even in the San Joaquin Valley, let alone in the city of Lindsay. Last night, we had a town meeting in Three Rivers, and we had a presentation on fire, fire evacuation, and it was a very long presentation. But I think the presentation really is putting people on notice. Because of the drought, you have to be prepared to evacuate if you live in the foothills. You have to have a plan of what you're going to take, where is your evacuation routes. And the one thing that always strikes me is, it takes people so long, once they get the notice of a mandatory evacuation, to leave. And I firmly believe this, is that when they get that notice, they have not made a plan to say what they're going to take. So what happens, I'm just probably speaking from experience, but you have a husband and wife, generally, that can't agree on what's going to go, and the vehicle during the evacuation.
Hopefully, the wife gets to go.
Yeah. Depends who has the keys. But that's an important part of an evacuation plan. You need to decide before you have an emergency, if you're told to evacuate immediately, know what you're going to take. So you save that half an hour or hour arguing about what goes in the car. But I think it's a very stark notice that we're going to have some serious issues in our foothills. So I think the message got through up in Three Rivers. I hope they do a program up in Springville, and it was very successful. We learned a few things, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Worthley.
About the most I've ever heard you say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This last Memorial Day, I was able to present a proclamation on behalf of the Board to the Dinuba ceremonies that they have at their cemetery every year, and the program just continues to grow every year. The amount of people who come out is just truly amazing, and they have all of the flags put up for all the veterans. Most of the veterans who are there, their families donate their flags back to the cemetery district, and they put them all up on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, and it's quite a moving sight to see. I recited the, I realized as I was preparing for this, that it's actually been 150 years since the Gettysburg Address. Now, it was given in 1863, but it was in November of 1863, so from the time of the last Memorial Day service, it's actually been 150-year interim period of time, and I thought it was really appropriate to read that. And I would encourage you, if you haven't read that address in a while, you know, it might be good to remind yourself and go back and look at it, because the words are very moving, and they're very forceful and impactful, and they're just as relevant today as they were when President Lincoln gave them back in 1863. One of my last responsibilities as a chairman of the Tulare County Association of Governments occurred this last week. I went to San Francisco with some of the staff and city manager from Tulare to have a rate evaluation for TCAG for purposes of going out for a bond. This bond, over about $60-plus million dollars, will be used for the Cartel Interchange Project, and then subsequently for the Betty Drive Interchange on the 99. Projects which are simply too large for us to pay for on a pay-as-we-go situation, we've been able to, pretty much so far, we have a loan with the county for $20 million. But anyway, it went very well. They didn't ask us a lot of questions. I think we're going to be pledging all of our sales tax revenue towards this, so it's a very secure type of a loan. It'll be over a 20-year period, designed to terminate about the time that our measure will terminate. Funny thing about the fire situation, we were up, my folks have a little cabin up in the mountains, about 4,500 feet in elevation, and the ground was very wet there. And one of the cabin owners had been coming up there, and he said, "Over the last five weeks, there had been seven inches of rain in that area." In fact, there was a controlled burn plan for the national park that got canceled because of too much moisture. An odd thing in the middle of a drought. But I will tell you this, that it didn't do anything, it won't do anything for the valley in terms of runoff, and there's still a big issue with the foothills. But I think one thing it will do is help the forest health. I noticed back in March, a lot of mortality starting to occur in conifers, pine trees that were starting to die from pine beetle attacks, and that's really stopped. So I think these late storms at least will hopefully help the forest itself be healthier and sustain itself through these coming months. But Supervisor Sheeta's correct, this is going to be a difficult time. And one other thing, it's sort of an odd thing, but when you had these late rains, there was a lot of grass, late grass that grew up. And if that grass does not get, you know, mowed down, either mechanically or with cattle, it actually can create a bigger fire hazard in the late summer, because, believe me, it will dry out. And if you've got a lot of vegetation on the ground floor, then it very easily can act as a catalyst in much more serious fires. But that's the latest from the mountains.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Worthley brought up the Gettysburg Address. For those of you who may have forgotten, Memorial Day was started to recognize the war dead of the Civil War, and that's the origin of Memorial Day, so.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Well, this has been a very philosophical and lengthy Board of Supervisors Matters. I will keep mine short. Real quick, I just wanted to mention, I do serve on the governing board of the Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Central California, and we just found out that the Nationwide Leadership Council has awarded the Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Central California with a 2013 Quality Award winner. Based on certain metrics, they have been identified as an outstanding organization in the country. So I'm really proud of that board. They're doing a great job, and look forward to them continuing to expand their presence here in Tulare County. Also this week, there's going to be a meeting in Early Mart. Thank you to the Sheriff's Department for their willingness to collaborate. Early Mart has been having a lot of problems with vandalism at their school, and as most communities in the unincorporated areas know, the school is the center of the community, and so we have to do the best we can to preserve all the efforts that go into building infrastructure necessary in the communities in the unincorporated areas. So I look forward to being a part of a solution there, and hopefully curbing the vandalism and destruction that's occurring there. And I, too, would like to encourage everyone to get out and vote today and exercise their democratic right and power, so that's all I have.
See, I did go out and vote.
My sticker's under my jacket, and I vote absentee and don't get a sticker, but thank you, Rita, for the sticker that you gave me. Appreciate it.
I voted yesterday's. If you don't know, you can actually walk into the elections office and vote there as well. I was able to do that yesterday, knowing that today was going to be a pretty full day. Well, actually, last week, I worked at our cemetery in Visalia during the Memorial Day event, assisting with parking. We had a lot of cars in the cemetery, a lot of people, and it was very congested, so it was my pleasure to help out in that way. Last Wednesday, I attended the Foster Care Appreciation Event. Well, their Health and Human Service Agency was very happy to be there with some foster parents. It was a very wonderful event, and it was nice to honor the folks that give their time to be foster parents. On Friday night, I did two things. Went to the Happy Trails Riding Academy fundraiser at the Convention Center. It gets bigger, it seems like it gets bigger and bigger every year, so very happy to support that event, and there were a lot of people there, and it's a very worthy cause for folks to support. After that, went over to the Rawhide Game. It was Mental Health Awareness Night, or Month, and the Rawhide actually had, was it turquoise jerseys on for the occasion, so I was very happy to participate there and to be there with a lot of clients, a lot of healthcare providers as well. I have a statement here I would like to read. Each of the supervisors have received communication from some employees regarding their concerns about the conditions of county employment, specifically the MOU. We thank you for your communication. However, we are currently in labor negotiations. The county has designated a lead negotiator and bargaining team to meet and confer with each employee association regarding wages, terms, and working conditions on a successor MOU. You have signed, you being the employees' unions, have signed ground rules, and would want to avoid direct dealing with the board by bypassing the designated chief negotiator. It would not be appropriate at this time for any of us, being the board members, to meet and have a dialogue directly with employees on any of these issues. If you have any concerns regarding your wages, terms, and working conditions, please contact your employee association directly so that it can be properly discussed during labor negotiations. Encouraging employees to contact us directly, not in this forum, during public comment period, but encouraging employees to contact us directly verges on unfair labor practice, and it concerns me that we're going in this direction. That having been said, we'll move on to our public comment period. I do have a number of requests to speak during public comment period. I do have a question for one. Lucinda De La Corona, or De La Cerda, looks like an O. Are you specifically wanting to speak to the Sharps ordinance or the land closure?
Sorry.
The Sharps. Item number 40. Okay, so item number 40 will be pulled so that you can speak during that time. Okay. I have a request from Danny Conrad. Sir, you can use either microphone. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Danny Conrad. I live at 14946 Oscar Avenue, Visalia, California. And in my neighborhood, there's probably 300 dogs, and if they picked all those dogs up, it would completely overflow your facility. But I think specifically my complaint is the ones that are actually running loose. I have to clean doggie dew out of my yard every day, and it's not from my dog. My dog stays in my pasture and in my garden, but to clean up virtually every single day, three, four, five, six piles of doggie dew out of your yard before your grandkids can go out in the yard and play. Most of the dogs come through my livestock fence, which is, you know, larger openings between the wire, and they go under my corral fencing and into my yard. Several years ago, I had one that used to come and dump it right in front of our front door, so when you opened your front door, you had to step over it. Finally, that dog got ran over, sorry to say, but when I call the animal control officers, they'll come out and they'll park, and the problem people that I have, in their front yard, and the dogs are actually in the street, and they retreat to the yard and up on their porch, and the dogs don't get picked up, they don't get cited for no license, no vaccinations, and not maintaining control of their animals. It's something that, you know, I've dealt with actually for about 14 years in that community. I've called, I would say, over 100 times in that length of time to get animals taken care of. Some I have caught in small cages, cage traps, and that particular neighbor actually destroyed the trap and turned the dog loose. They crushed the trap. And it was inside of my yard, beside my house, where it caught the dog. And I just wish that the animal control officer, who actually has citing, you know, has the ability to cite somebody for this, has never cited those people. When he picked up their dog, they never went back and got that dog from the shelter. They went to their relatives in Farmer'sville and got more dogs. That's something that I deal with every single day. If they would cite them, fine them, I think that would take care of the problem, because they don't feed their dogs, they eat my dog's food. I guess that's, I think my time's up, but I would really like to see them actually cite if they don't pay their fines. It goes on their taxes. It's very simple.
Okay, Mr. Conrad, have you talked to Mr. Lutz? That you're aware of, you've talked to a Mr. Lutz?
I've talked to several people. I've called, I've called.
Tim, raise your hand. I'd like you to meet him in the hallway, okay? And he'll take your information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Rita Woodard.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members, Mr. Russo, Ms. Bels Lang. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I appreciate the Board Members' comments about voting today. It is important, I am the registrar of voters here, and I have today with me pins for the Board Members for the statewide direct primary election, June 3rd, 2014, in Tulare County, and some, and some more "I voted" stickers. It is important to go vote. Every vote counts, and they especially count in the local elections. We have had many elections where they have been tied, or they have been one way or the other won by one or two votes in the local elections. In the national election, where millions vote, one vote sure may not count very much, but the local elections is where you can sway the results. Of our 137,000-plus registered voters, which is low for the amount of population in our county, we have 65.2% vote by mail people. We have received in the office 17,000-plus ballots by now, maybe a little more after yesterday. So a lot of the vote-by-mail ballots will come in at the precincts today, we hope, but take your vote-by-mail ballot to the precinct. Do not mail it, because if it is not in my hands by 8:00 tonight, we cannot count it. We have drop boxes outside of the Government Plaza Building. They're red, white, and blue, and we have one up at the courthouse in the East Rose Garden. You can drive right by, drop your ballot in. If you care to, you can walk into the election office and drop your ballot in there, or you can vote in there. You can drop it off in the auditor's office at the courthouse. You can't vote there, though. But please get out and vote. It's very, very important that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I have a request also from Shyla Gonzalez, who will speak to item number 43, so if you'll know that I do have your request. I do have also a request from Linda Castillo.
Good morning, Linda Castillo, 1124 Blue Oak Street in Tulare, California.
Excuse me, if you're going to hold signs up, would you go to the back so that you're not obstructing the view of other people, please? So if you want to hold your sign up, would you please move behind the other people? You're still holding your sign up. I can ask you to leave, I can ask you to leave the room. Okay.
Mr. Russo.
Carter, time over, please.
Chairman, Mr. Russo, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I'm with Community First, identify as the Tulare County Workforce, their families, friends, neighbors, church members, and countless supporters. And I'm here to just advise that placing Tulare County first, according to recent surveys received from Tulare County Workforce, equals quality public services, living wage for all workers, retirement with dignity, quality and affordable health care for all, work-life balance, and employment security. Please take a moment to remember those which you represent, including the citizens of the county, which are friends, families, and supporters of the community. Chairman Cox, you stated recently, the Board of Supervisors tries to live within its means. This statement is not parallel with the Board of Supervisors allowing themselves to receive almost 9% in raises in 2013, while thousands of the Tulare County workforce have not received a COLA since 2008. The Tulare County Board of Supervisors and county administrative officer is now offering a raise of 0% for the 2014, 2015. There isn't any logical way to explain not giving hard-working employees of the county a raise in seven years. We want the community to be strong and organized by not taking into account that employees deserve a cost-of-living adjustment is negligent and insensitive. Please help make this right by allowing Tulare County workers to earn a living wage. Kings County Board of Supervisors earns an average of $40,000 less per year than Tulare County Board of Supervisors. However, most Kings County employees, including but not limited to the eligibility workers and social workers, receive substantially more in pay than Tulare. Remember, your actions speak louder than words. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a request from Kermit Wolchleger.
Chairman Cox, Vice Chairman Worthley, Tulare County Board of Supervisors, Health and Human Services Administrations, Community Workforce, and Friends of Tulare County. The question I have today is as follows. Is Visalia Tulare County still like Mayberry RFD? Are we becoming more like Bell, California? A town in Southern California where city officials there decided that tax money coming in to run the city was their personal bank account. They forgot it was taxpayer money, and were engaged in rewarding themselves with huge salaries. They lost their moral compass. Yes, I know, Mayberry RFD was a television show in the '60s. Life was simple. People looked out for each other. There were good old-fashioned values. Respect was a two-way street. I moved here from Wichita, Kansas, after high school. I lived in the Los Angeles area for 15 years. After my wife and I got married, we moved to Fresno, to tend Fresno State. A year later, came to Tulare County. She worked as a Spanish teacher at Manatchee High School. I was the CPS officer in Dinuba. Moving to Fresno and Visalia after living in Los Angeles for 15 years was a welcome move. Even though Visalia had a population of 80,000, it still had that Mayberry charm. I did not miss the intrigue of Los Angeles. Tulare was such a great place in the '90s. You go to Merle You go to Merle's to celebrate after a band performance or graduation. We had a director of DPSs who had a top salary in the county of sixty-six thousand a year, the assistant director a few thousand less, unit managers forty-two thousand a year. This all changed in nineteen ninety-six, when a board member convinced the other board members to form a super-agency. Goodbye, Mayberry RFD, hello, Bell. Look what we have today. We have a Director of Health and Human Services making around two-hundred thousand a year, a County Administrative Officer almost two thousand a year, board members making a hundred thousand a year, plus hefty compensation packages. I presume that living within our means means that the fox is in charge of the henhouse. Contrast, as Ms. Castillo said, Kings County Board of Supervisors, where they make forty thousand less than the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Consider your local Visalia Unified School Board or City Council members. Their salary is one-tenth the time as our Board of Supervisors. I applaud you folks for what you shared and your extracurricular activities, and I know you're working hard out there. Any conclusion, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
Consider the facts. Is Tulare County Visalia looking like Bell, California? Or does it have the capacity to maintain that Mayberry RFD charm? You decide. Chairman Cox, Vice Chairman Worthley, Board of Supervisors, Health and Human Services Staff, Tulare County Workforce, citizens and friends of Tulare County. Good day.
Thank you. I have no further requests or anyone else wishing to speak at public comment period. There's someone coming up right behind you, sorry. Go ahead. No, I've-
Name, Roger Ortiz.
Would your name and address for the record, please?
Roger Ortiz.
I, Roger Ortiz, have, has been living in Porterville, California since nineteen seventy-two. My wife and I are registered to vote. My presence here is to let you know about a Visalia inspector who has been harassing my mind psychologically since two thousand seven, or two thousand eight, please forgive my memory. With accusations about, with accusations about building on one of my properties located on one-nine-five-six-eight, Row two-thirty, Strathmore, California. I did everything I could to show him how wrong he was about that. When he sent a Porterville inspector to meet me at that location, this Porterville inspector witnessed with his own eyes that I was not building anything on that property. But that was not enough for the Visalia inspector. He continued harassing me by the phone. I asked him to stop calling my house and to stop insensitating on what I was building on, something on one of my properties. I reminded him about his associate who witnessed my place. I even told him to stop warming his chair at his, at his office and come to my house instead. I wanted him, him to see the property by himself with his own eyes. He responded to my invitation. My wife, the Visalia and Porterville inspectors, and myself went, went to that property. Questioning that, we all saw that nothing was happening into that property. Therefore, I asked him to stop calling me, and he agreed. I really thought he would, but I was wrong. The Visalia inspector raised this Strathmore property value without a reason, which I believe isn't, which I believe it was because I made him go through that house and see it by himself, and not because I was doing something else on that place. Since then, the story continues year after year, and I'm feeling tired, tired, psychologically sick, and depressed about my health. How has my city been served by dishonest individuals whose job is to keep everything in order? I will be there at your office next week with evidence about your dishonesty. We have an autistic son, and thanks to your service, I could not keep paying my med, my health insurance, which is going about seventy percent of the medical service. And you, my goodness, I know we both do not know each other, and when I called you for the first time, what I got from you was no courtesy nor consideration, and without, and without knowledge about the reason of my call that day, what I got from you were yelling and insults.
What I'd like to say is the, I've been papers to you guys, to the five, you never respond me back. I'd like to you respond me back because, like I said before, I pay hundreds, the thousand of the taxes, not twenty thousand, hundreds. And I don't care how much money you guys make, that's not my business. You guys made me feel low, and then I come here. This has happened four years ago, okay? So you guys, you don't fix it? I come again, or beyond you guys. And you, Mike, you better not yell my, again, myself.
My mic's right there.
Oh, who's? Him. It's Porterville's.
Who is it?
It's him.
That's Mike.
Who's the one, the fifth district? You?
Yeah.
You the fifth district? Who's the fifth district? Who's the one that the fifth district?
I am the fifth district.
Oh, you're the one that yelled to me?
I've spoken to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're the one that yelled to me?
Did we yell?
Yeah, yeah, you yelled to me.
Okay, Mr. Ortiz, thank you. Your time is up, and you have been responded to by staff. We will not be contacted.
Well, I came, I came because you guys, you guys, I came to thank for this because you guys didn't cover quarter, so have to came again.
Okay, thank you.
We, we, we just wanting, there's the, now only you guys, everybody, do first the politician, and then thinking. And I think you guys should be thinking the politician later, because thinking is for that country. Thank you. I, I leave the papers here, so-
You can leave with our clerk.
I'm sorry, did I point to you, okay? Sorry.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stella Velasquez, twenty-six, forty-seven, North Elm in Visalia. Good morning, and I will be voting later. My name is Stella Velasquez. First of all, this is gonna be more personal. I'm not a good public speaker face-to-face like all of you are, so I'm nervous, and then again, I'm a very important and valued public speaker behind the mic, which would make many of you nervous in my profession, because it's a nine-one-one emergency dispatcher. This past January, my thirty-year mark, I received numerous training certificates, keeping myself certified with the state. I've been honored with receiving Tulare County Dispatcher of the Year award twice, once in ninety-one, again in two thousand thirteen. I was awarded the Tulare County Valley Hero Award in two thousand thirteen. I'm proud of these awards. However, the things that make me the most proud is going into TCOSO dungeon, if anybody knows where that's at, which I know you do, for ten, twelve, fourteen hours nightly for the past thirty years, and doing a job that nobody, that not everybody is able to do. My number-one goal is to make sure that every law enforcement unit, whether supervisor, deputy detective, police officer for the four police agencies we dispatch for, go home safe at the end of each shift. In the thirty years, I've attended too many funerals for our law enforcement, whether natural, accidental, suicidal, or at the hand of another. I've attended many memorials and still shed tears like it was yesterday. I have many hidden scars, and after thirty years, there are still certain types of calls that scare me, and I say many silent prayers for everybody involved. Being able to help that hysterical, frightened, or screaming citizen, holding their hand by staying on the phone with them till help arrives, and then hearing their sigh of relief is rewarding, rewarding and stressful. Sometimes I hear a thank you, sometimes a click of the phone as they just disconnect, but it's okay, because I know their calibre has showed up, which is my deputy or my police officer. And I say "my" because dispatchers, we claim every unit as our own, and we do everything in our power to keep them safe, as well as every citizen. It's an extremely stressful yet satisfying profession that many have tried to do but fall short. Over my thirty years, I've been told I could never do your job, or how do you do it? Many of my law enforcement family have told us thank you or good job, especially after a crazy night. What we're asking, and what I'm asking for, is to be recognized and paid for the job, the profession that we do. I had to ask when our last raise was, because I go in and just do my job. I was told two thousand eight, and that was over a three-year period. We're still the most underpaid county for our profession, and you, the Board of Supervisors, see yourself as valued employees and have chosen to give yourselves another raise, and what you have given yourself in one year, we got over a three-year span back in two thousand eight. I'm asking that you take a look at your dedicated, valuable employees. Don't take away from us, and show us that you do listen and that you do care by awarding us the raise we deserve, along with the assistance on our medical, and it goes for all of our law enforcement, all of my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Velasquez. Anyone else wishing to address the public? Sir? If this is on an item on today's agenda, we will be hearing those items as well. Okay. Anyone else wishing to address the board on an item that's not on today's agenda? I saw a hand way in the back, sir, if you'd come forward, please. Sir, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Deputy Dean Kano. My address is three-two-eight-seven-eight, Row one-five-six, and this was about today's agenda. I apologize, I had missed the full meeting due to a prior commitment. I was here due to an article I read on possible rules regarding a marijuana regulation.
That item's gonna be heard later.
That item's gonna be heard later? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem.
Stick around.
Anyone else wishing to address the board on an item not on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We are going to take up quickly our closed session. Item number three is being polled and will be held on June seventeenth, although we do have a closed session set for this item that we will hold this morning directly after we vote on the-
Consent.
Pardon me? We're, we're doing that directly after consent, that's already been worked out. And what item is that, Ms. Bells Lang?
I'm sorry.
On our closed session?
Item-
E?
C's and cat.
C's and cat. Okay, we're going to take up our consent calendar. We have item number three that will be heard June seventeenth. Item number forty is polled for separate consideration. Any other items that the board would like to vote this time?
Chairman, I don't want to pull, I just want to make, call attention to item thirty-three. The reason I want to call attention to it is because normally what we have under, of course, consent calendar are items which are normal course-of-action items, but, and this will become a normal kind of course-of-action item in the future, but it's, this is, as far as I know, this is the first time under Senate Bill, Assembly Bill seven-twenty, where we are limited to, on road construction work performed by county forces, to thirty percent of the total work road performed by the county, that we're actually, have gone out to bid to do a project which happens to be in my district. And the war, the, the bid was awarded to a local company in Clovis to do the work, and this will become something, again, that happens in the future, but in the past, these are the kind of jobs that our own forces did. So this is a, this is a change, but will become more common going forward. Just want to call attention to it. The project did come in under bid, under the engineer's estimate bid by about three-hundred thousand dollars. I do hope we will use this opportunity from an agency standpoint to sort of review this project in terms of how, how the work was done, how well it was done, how, how would comport with our county forces, and also the kind of the cost difference if we can. I think it'd be important to learn from these situations, but I just want to call attention to that.
Mr. Chair, one, one other comment, I don't need to pull it. This is just a comment related to item thirty-two. That is the Pixley Safe Routes of School project that we had to reject all bids a few months ago and put it back out to bid. We were assured that the construction timeline would not be affected, and it won't be, but as a result of going back out to bid and coming back, we've saved about thirty-two thousand dollars, and I commend staff and everyone that's been involved for making that happen. With that, I would move for approval if there's no other item to be removed. Anyone from the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, move by Vanderpoel, second by Worthley, cast your votes. The consent calendar, less items three and forty are approved, and we are going to adjourn quickly into closed session, because we do have a, our bond counsel here on item number C on our closed agenda, so we're gonna adjourn to closed session. For how long, Ms. Bells Lang?
I'm not sure.
We, we may be gone up to thirty minutes. As soon as we get the rest of our board members back in here, we will continue and do item number forty, so whichever staff member is set to present on item number forty. We're back in open session, we'll take up item number forty.
According, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Vice Howard, Director Solid Waste, item number forty deals with Sharps ordinance, to add chapter four to part four of the Tulare County Ordinance Code. So the Sharps ordinance, in, back in two thousand eight, the state of California required a Sharps home-generated program to be implemented, and then your board on, in two thousand twelve, asked staff to work with the Consolidated, Consolidated Waste Management Authority, develop a model Sharps ordinance. Staff has done that. The ordinance has been implemented in the city of Tulare, Dinuba, Visalia, and Lindsay. The ordinance will require the safe collection disposal by retailers of home-generated Sharps that have come from those retailers at the same basic amount. The costs will be borne by those retailers. I've got Ann McGonaghy with me this morning for a quick presentation on what the ordinance entails and some of the details of it.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. My name is Ann McGonaghy, I'm with Consolidated Waste Management Authority. It's taken us about three years to develop the language for this ordinance, and as you know, I won't go through the history of the need for the ordinance, but what it will require is that Sharps retailers will be responsible for providing a way for their customers to bring back their Sharps. They could drop them off, they have a choice, they can either take them over the counter and store them behind the counter, or CWMA is offering kiosks for free, they look like a large red mailbox. We have funds put aside to purchase those if they so require. We are asking that citizens bring these in Sharps containers, and I've brought a couple of these, kind of look like this, there's a smaller version of them. We're also requesting that pharmacies consider selling, whoops, selling their Sharps in these containers, which are all-in-one, so the Sharps needles come with a container. Once they're used, they're put at the top, this turns, locks them in, and then they can just drop these off. One of the things that the Sharps retailers will have the option to do is, they can request proof of residency, proof of sale, so if somebody purchased from Walmart, they could require them to bring back the receipt with the used Sharp so that they can dispose of them. It is up to the pharmacy how they want to do that. Pharmacies will need to contract with a medical waste transporter. We did some preliminary survey on the cost, and what I found was several medical waste haulers- And what I found was several medical waste haulers will require contracts, some do not. The prices vary from sixty dollars to collect thirty-eight gallons of collected Sharps up to about two hundred and fifty on a contract. So it, I personally have gone out to the city of Tulare and started to speak to all the pharmacies there because that city has already passed the ordinance. And most of them, I think, I visited ten different pharmacies. You're talking your corporate pharmacy. Everyone is excited about the new program. I have had calls from Rite Aid wanting to know how all of their stores can comply within Tulare County. I've had calls from Walmart doing the same thing. I visited Tractor Supply because this ordinance also applies to anybody that sells Sharp. So if you're selling Sharps for egg purposes or for pet supplies, you still are required to provide a way for your customers to bring back these Sharps. One of the things that is a concern for CWMA, Consolidated Waste Management Authority, is how these get into our waste stream and how dangerous it is for our employees, whether they are the haulers, the sorters on the line, or even the ones that go through and periodically check trash, recycling, and green waste containers. I asked one of our haulers, Penya's disposal, if he could do me a favor and collect Sharps off of their sorting line. This container is a two-pound container. It's a two-pound coffee container. It is full of Sharps. These were collected in four days. Four days. And so it's really critical that we have something in place that will allow people a place to drop these off. And in support of that, the new ordinance is being passed. What CWMA is also doing is we are hosting four events throughout Tulare County, beginning June the fourteenth, going through June, July the nineteenth. Four different locations within Tulare County that allow residents that have collected home-generated Sharps for the last, I don't know, ten years or however long they've collected them. They can bring them to these events free. We will accept them, and they will need to provide a proof of residency for Tulare County. But we are providing these events in the city of Tulare on the fourteenth, the city of Dinuba on June twenty-sixth, the city of Visalia on July the tenth, and in Porterville on July the nineteenth. We have brochures in place where now that you will begin to see these ads in the local newspapers, websites, Facebook and Twitter. So we really thank you for pushing us forward to get some language in place and a program in place that would benefit all of Tulare County residents. And I ask for your support in this passing of the ordinance. And I'm open to any questions you might have.
If I can, we've, I was a part of instigating this years ago, and there are literally thousands and thousands of these syringes that go into our solid waste or flush down the toilet or other places. And not only do you have to deal with the needle, but sometimes there are medications left inside. The big concern is when those, they start to break down, where does that go and what problems does that cause? So I'm happy to see this come forward. Does anyone else have questions for staff? I do have a request from Lucinda to speak to this matter. Yes, if you could, this microphone right here works just as well.
Hello?
Please, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lucinda De La Serta. I'm the pharmacy supervisor with United Health Centers, and we own and operate a clinic at four seventy-six East Washington Avenue in Early Mart. Within our clinic, we have an outpatient pharmacy there. And I'm sorry, I missed your name, but the speaker that spoke previous to me, she answered most of my questions and concerns that I had. So I just, I read the ordinance, and I thought it was a little vague as far as, unless I missed it, as far as how the patients transport them back to us or bring them to us. But I think she answered the question. She said they would be bringing them back in a Sharps container. I would just like clarification on that, that it's not going to leave it open for them to bring it back in a baggie or a milk container. And if so, if you can change the language a little bit in your ordinance to clarify that, unless I missed something.
The language in the ordinance does cover the certified container. It does, and in all of our advertisement and any outreach that we're doing, we are specifically making sure that everybody understands that it is in a certified container.
Okay.
Which also offers an opportunity for your pharmacy to provide those for your customers.
Provide them at a charge or no charge?
At a charge.
At a charge.
Okay.
That was my only concern or question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Worley.
Second.
Seconded by Vanderpool. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous. Thank you, Bryce and Ann. Okay, we will now take up item number forty-two, our first untimed item. Dr. Dirksen.
Good morning, Chairman, Fox members of the board. Ms. Bells Lang, I'm really hoping I don't fail this IQ test for the third time in a row in front of you. Why try to open this? There we go. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity to talk about one of the agency's programs, a program about which we have not previously presented or talked with you about. The family advocacy program was implemented in two thousand and six when we hired our first advocate in the mental health branch. The decision to move in this direction was a function of several factors, which included, one, expressed frustration on the part of some families attempting to understand and/or navigate eligibility criteria on behalf of a family member; two, the desire to increase access to services; three, attempts to increase transparency and accountability across the branch; and four, the creation of a more welcoming system, which was inclusive rather than exclusive, of families with a vested interest in the treatment of their loved ones. Given the positive outcomes resulting from the hiring of an advocate for the mental health plan, measured by staff, community, family feedback, resolution of matters at a low level of administrative oversight, and decreased complaints with a concomitant increase for general information. We moved toward the development of, development and implementation of similar models in the child welfare system in two thousand and eleven and in Tulare Works in two thousand and thirteen. The latter in particular was also consistent with our vision, mission, and core values at the agency. So here to provide you with brief overviews of what our advocates do on behalf of the families and consumers we have the privilege to serve, I'm going to introduce Luann Baldwin, initially from mental health. Darcy Massey from Child Welfare Services will follow her. And then finally, Jacob Jimenez with Tulare Works. And then we will be happy to take any questions that you might have. There you go.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Cox and the board. It is an honor to be here today. I want to talk a little bit about what it is that my role entails as family advocate for mental health services. As you can see from this list, it is my honor to help people to navigate the system of mental health services, to inform people of limitations, and also to inform them of eligibility requirements for mental health services for their family members. It is also important to help folks to know what they can do to advocate for their family member in an effective way. And I listen to the frustrations, to the concerns, to the questions of the family members, giving them adequate opportunity to talk to me about what it is that they are having trouble with, and give them, if they so request, some advice about ways that they may solve those problems. The last thing that I do oftentimes is to help people to network as family members because there is a real need for support and to know that they are not alone in helping their family members. So you'll see that this pie represents the incidence of complaints and concerns that I had received as mental health family advocate during the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen. Twelve percent of the complaints or concerns that I get regard education. There's a pretty steep learning curve when it comes to a family that is new to mental illness. It's not an individual problem, it's a family problem. People need to find out what does a diagnosis mean, what are the treatments, and what is the prognosis. So there are resources that I can point out to people and also discuss some of these different items to help people to have a more useful working knowledge of them. Twenty-one percent of the folks talk to me about communication problems. The law really is responsible for a lot of that in that confidentiality law blocks persons whose family member is over the age of eighteen from discussing or getting information about their treatment unless the person getting the treatment signs a release. In cases where the release is not signed, that's where I can really be of the most utility because those families need to know, at least in a general way, what some of the processes are, what is going on. And I still cannot breach confidentiality law. But I can talk to them, I can hear them, and I can help them to kind of understand in general terms. Then twenty-six percent deal with medication. Medication is often a really difficult item for families to grapple with because, as most people know, in the mental health field, it takes a while for a person to adequately get into their system the medication for psychiatric purposes and to be able to report effectively to their psychiatrist what are the main effects and what are the side effects of the medication. And so it takes a little while to get the right medication at the right level to be of the most help to a person with a mental illness. And forty-one percent of the complaints and concerns that I receive have to do with hospitalization. Oftentimes, families will call me desperate to get their family member hospitalized because they have had failed attempt after failed attempt to get help, and they really do believe that the only way that their family member is going to get better is if they are hospitalized, given medication, and stabilized. This next slide really deals with where I get the referrals for my services. And after eight years of being the family advocate for the mental health division, I have found that fifteen percent of my referrals come from persons who are getting services from the system. Part of that is because the patient rights advocate, the problem resolution coordinator, and myself have gone around to the different clinics to let peers know about where our services are at in terms of reaching out to their family members. And so oftentimes, the persons getting the services want us, want me to talk to their family members. Five percent of my referrals come from the website. I get emails oftentimes. And normally, what I do is I answer in an email, and then I offer people ways to get ahold of me by either meeting with me in person or calling me because very few of the complaints or concerns that I get are over with in one call or one contact. Thirty percent of my contacts are coming from National Alliance on Mental Illness. That is really a great source of forwarding the requests for help to me because when people call NAMI, oftentimes, they want to talk to someone who works for the department, who can truly give them an idea of how to navigate the system. Fifteen percent of my referrals come from department staff. I am also finding that another fifteen percent come from our contract providers. And twenty percent of the referrals that I receive are from other family members who have had successful interactions with me in the past. So word of mouth is a really fairly high set of referrals for me. Now, outcomes are always important. And what I think is probably the most important aspect of the outcomes from family advocacy and mental health is that by helping people to handle the problems that they come to me with, I am not wanting to foster dependence. I am wanting to teach them how to advocate effectively themselves. And it's been very successful, really, here in Tulare County for the past eight years. And in turn, there's a reciprocity that has occurred between the family members and the system of care. Because over the last seven years, we have been very actively working on wellness, recovery, and resilience programming in mental health, which means that we partner with families and with folks who receive the services so that there is communication that comes from our community that helps us to build better services, and it also involves them in decisions and in our policies and procedures. So overall, it's my belief that the services for the mental health department have been significantly strengthened through the use of my services as family advocate. And I thank you very much for the honor of being able to present to you this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Darcy Massey. I am the family advocate for Child Welfare Services. I've been with the county for about thirteen years, and all of that time I've been in child welfare. I've worked as a social worker, a clinician, and now the pleasure of being the family advocate, which is the best job ever. So what do I do? Oh, here. My main role is to receive the concerns and complaints that come into our agency. So those complaints that used to go up our chain of command to possibly our division manager, our deputy director, those get routed to me now. And I take the time to work with either the families, the foster parents, our service providers, to hopefully help resolve that at the lowest level possible. So in that time, I'm also working with them, like Luann said, on some advocacy skills for themselves so that the next time they have an issue, they understand what the chain of command is, they understand how our system works, so that they can hopefully resolve it on their own the next time around. The biggest thing I do is provide clarification and education regarding our system. It's a very confusing system, whether it's within child welfare or the juvenile court system. Many of the times, the clients that I'm working with are under a lot of pressure, they're stressed out, maybe their children were just detained. So they go to court, and they hear all this legal jargon, and they don't understand what it means. And then they leave, and a lot of times, the attorney or other folks may not have a lot of time to explain it to them. So I get a lot of those calls just to help them understand what our system does, how it works, maybe why, why a decision was made or why a decision wasn't. So that's, that's the majority of what I do. I also do a lot of community presentations to different groups to hopefully help get the word out there to our community partners and other folks as to what our agency does, how come we have to do things a certain way. Talk a lot about confidentiality because we have that same issue. Many times, you'll hear about a case in the media or public, and we can't always comment back to let them know what we've done because it's confidential. So explaining that, why we can't, you know, justify what we've done or give them any information about the case. Also do presentations on mandated reporting to a lot of organizations so they understand what their responsibility is if they're a mandated reporter and how they go about doing that. Pretty much function as quality control for the agency. Our agency is definitely committed to quality customer service, and so just making sure that we're doing our job the right way and that we're following the guidelines that we have to follow. So the types of complaints I get, mine's broken down into two categories. About eighteen percent are concerns with the workers, maybe how they've been treated, they're not getting phone calls back, our level of customer service. Like I said, many of the clients we deal with aren't necessarily happy to be involved in our system, so sometimes they have concerns with many different workers. We are tracking those concerns and complaints. So if we get maybe one client who complains about everyone, well, maybe the client just doesn't like our agency. But if we have maybe one worker that a lot of people are complaining about, then we're going to address that and find out, maybe it's a training issue, maybe it's a customer service issue, maybe it's the way they're coming across to clients. We want to make sure we address that with them. The majority of them, eighty-two percent, are concerns with our system, just not understanding, you know, why can't you change that? Well, it's a court order, you know? Here's how you have to do that. Talk to your attorney, put it back on calendar. So mainly just helping them understand what our system does and why it functions the way it does. Here's just a breakout of the folks that I've come into contact with. The majority, fifty-five percent, are the parents that we work with. That's usually who I'm getting the calls from. Twenty-two percent are relatives. So it could be maybe grandma or aunt or uncle. Twenty-two percent are relatives, so it could be maybe grandma, or aunt or uncle, or someone that maybe has care and custody of the child, just wanting more information on how our system works. Nineteen percent are foster parents. I definitely work a lot with our foster parents to help them when they're having issues or concerns with our agency. And then four percent is other, which could be just the general public. Calls that come over to you guys get routed to me, and I help resolve those. And also our service providers and people like that. Some of our outcomes, definitely a reduced number of complaints going up the chain of command. We're taking, I don't know that it's a reduced number of complaints overall, I think now that people have my name and number, I'm getting a lot of calls. But we're hopefully resolving them at a lower level and making it easier on the client that they can understand the system upfront. We've also created the Parent Agency Collaborative Effort, which we call PACE, which is a parent leadership program. It's a collaboration between the Child Abuse Prevention Council, the county, our family resource centers, and some other providers where we're bringing parents together and teaching them advocacy skills so that they can make change in their community. We did a parent leadership training, a three-day training in April that involved about twenty-five parents from all across the county, and it was a great success and a lot of fun, and they've already made some changes, they've been in the paper, they spoke at the March on Main, some other things like that. And then one of the last outcomes is just policy and procedure change. Like I said, we're a customer service agency, and if we find something that's not working, then we want to make a change. So it might look good on paper, and we talk to the parents, and they're like, yeah, that didn't work for me. Then we, you know, we definitely take that seriously and look at the policy and procedure and change it if we need to. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jacob Jimenez, and I am the family advocate for Tulare Works. And my role as a family advocate for Tulare Works is to resolve complaints and concerns at the lowest levels possible. And usually, I assist families that are calling about complaints, they have issues with the system or Tulare Works Agency, and I assist them in providing them direction, education on how the program works and what is eligibility and how the policy and procedures work. Oftentimes, they're either calling for themselves or they're calling for a family member. I also assist clients and families in advocating for themselves. I talk to them about how they can go about talking to their worker, talking to their supervisor, the chain of command, because it is important that they understand that as Tulare Works, we're here to help them, but they need to follow also the chain of command. It feels that, allows them to feel that someone is listening to them, that they're not being ignored, but allow us the opportunity to have that worker help them the way they're supposed to be helping, and if they cannot get the resolution from that worker, to also allow their supervisor or manager, and at the end, you know, it comes to me. Usually by then, we find a resolution. I oftentimes talk to the client about what the complaint or concern is and get a side, their side of the story. And I often let them know that I will review the case to find out, you know, what happened. Did we miss something, or is it something that they were not eligible for? And then I provide them education. I ensure that complaints are being addressed in a timely manner. Usually, in my department, if I get a phone call or referral, it can take twenty-four hours or less for me to answer a question or resolve an issue. However, depending on the type of complaint or issue, it could take weeks, or it could take a couple months, such as if the complaint has to do with collections or the IRS. However, I always am in contact with the client to let them know what the process is, what's going on, and the result of the resolution. Types of concerns that I usually get, twenty-five percent of them have to do with education, like I mentioned. They either don't understand, or they have questions in regards to the policy or procedures of the program. So I talk to them about them, and I let them know what their requirements are in order for them to continue their eligibility with the program. System complaints, about forty-two percent, and that's because some individuals that came in, they applied for services and they were not eligible for them, they often questioned why not. They, and I talk to them about how the system works and how there's an eligibility process, and if they don't qualify, then it often becomes a grievance. There's something they need, they come to us because they need something. And as a family advocate, I do not want our clients and our residents to feel that there's nothing there for them, that just because Tulare Works is unable to provide them a service, that there's nothing there, which leads me to the sixteen percent of the referrals. I work very closely with our service providers and faith-based organizations to, in case we cannot assist them, we, I make a referral to them to still give them that assistance, you know, their needs are being met. So referral source, twenty-five percent of them are usually the client calls themselves, they will call me or they send me an email. We have our tchhsa.org website where it has our information on there, and a lot of our clients go there where they're seeking advocacy, and they will contact us via email or phone. Fifty-one percent of them are staff. HHSA staff will actually send a referral to me. It's trackable by my supervisor, which is really good, and it allows me to know that the client has followed the chain of command and now has gone to the HHSA staff. Twenty-one percent of the referral come from other sources such as clinics or hospitals. Also, I have received some referrals from the Board of Supervisor Secretaries, and lately I've been getting a couple from the state, and they have found out that we haven't advocated Tulare Works, and it has worked great. They really like that. As an outcome, we have reduced complaints that have been going up to the chain of command, up to our supervisors, our directors. My program is new, it just started, or my position just started last year. However, I've been doing a lot of outreach in letting the public know who I am and what I do and how together we can work and assist our residents of Tulare County. I don't consider clients, the term clients, but more, we're all residents of Tulare County, and let's help each other. And to improve the working relationship between the clients and the staff, I do a lot of training. I have trained most of our Tulare Works staff as to what it is that I do in advocacy, and also to remember to keep that bond of trust between the client and the worker to allow to, for a better work environment. And in conclusion, this is just my opinion, we as advocates, we consider ourselves the voice for the client and the ears of the agency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this morning. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I heard the term used a number of times, advocacy. I guess my takeaway from this was more of an empowerment, because I think about when you educate people about processes, about how to deal with situations, how to overcome problems, in many cases, how they can perhaps be better parents or caretakers and so forth themselves. It go, in my mind, it goes beyond advocacy, and I don't mean to belittle advocacy, but one can advocate forever and never get anything. And I sense that what you're doing is actually accomplishing a lot, and it's empowering people to be able to make better informed decisions and be able to know, you know, what's available for them, what's not available for them, where they need to pick up and do their part, where we can help them out. But I guess the word comes, that comes to my mind really more as empowerment, just a comment.
Call them the empowerment people.
Okay. I've got, just a quick comment. Thank you for the presentation. I think you did a great job, all three of you, and thank you for help, helping to educate the board about what it is that you do. I think you are a tremendous resource for Tulare County residents, and it's really nice to know that there is that, I guess, missing link, or someone who can serve as the direct liaison between the actual individual with specific case experience or maybe not having any knowledge of the system and the system itself. I think you guys have done a great job, and I've definitely enjoyed working with, especially Luanne, through the Mental Health Board, but I know that you are tremendous advocates, and thank you for what you do for Tulare County because you sure do a great job helping make Tulare County look great. So, thanks.
Jane?
A quick comment and question. Great presentation, I'm glad to see you, see some faces with names, and one quick question, do the majority of patients sign the disclosure form? And if they don't, what do families do in order to get the information? And is it just a California law, or is it a nationwide law?
I don't, I asked a number of questions.
Didn't you only give them one question? That's a compound question.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. That's a little complicated, but I'll try to answer what I can and then maybe leave the rest to Dr. Dirksen.
There's a smart employee.
My backup. As far as that release of information, there are folks who really, when they are symptomatic, are not trusting that their families are working in their best interest, because if the family would like to get them into the hospital and on medication, that may be at cross purposes to what the person with the illness is feeling or wanting. So there are times when there is no release that ends up being signed, and that's when I have lots of contact with families. I mean, sometimes they'll call me every week for a few months, or every other day for a couple of weeks, because it's so frustrating, and they really want to talk to the service providers. What I tell them is, you do not have a right to get the information, but you do by law have the right to give the information. According to 5150.05, there was a law back in 2001 that was passed that says that people who have historical context information about the mental illness of a person being evaluated for 5150 do have the right to provide the information. Now, the caveat to that is, they have to give factual and truthful information because if it's not, they would be facing some civil penalties. So it's complex, and what I try to do is explain, these are the general things that could be happening. These are some of the options that your family member may be facing and may be offered to them. But sometimes, they really have to just be very patient and not be a part of the direct process. Now, I know for sure it is California state law, I believe it is federal law, but I would rather...
I'm not sure I know that either.
Okay, so we can get back to you on that. That's an excellent, you know, I just really have worried about California law, but, not worried, I'm sorry, been wanting to educate people about California law, but we can get back to you on that for sure. Thank you.
Mr. Russo brought up an important issue that's, well, an issue that's important to me, and it was demonstrated again in Santa Barbara just recently. I'd like to know how we can, as a Board of Supervisors, influence the law to where we can do something about, of course, not, putting these people into treatment without their consent. And this consent problem has been going on for years and years and years, and we see it all across the United States, our mass killers, our mentally ill people. And when your parents call, the parents call the police department, and we can't do anything. I mean, we have a serious problem we need to address. Now, I know when I served on the Mental Health Board, when Pete was an undergraduate, we made tremendous strides in Tulare County on how we approach this issue. But we hit a wall, and how do we get past that wall? And I'd like to see a recommendation coming back from your group saying, this is the wall we hit, how can we overcome the wall, either through the legislature, because we can't do it on our own? If we need legislation, we should sure advocate for legislation. And when I sat on that board, we had a person I met on that board whose kid was constantly in jail, constantly from, even in Arizona, and they'd kick him, because they'd kick him from all these charges because they knew he was mentally ill. But down the road, it gets more and more serious, and without his consent, we couldn't do, they couldn't do anything with him. So please come to us and give us some ideas that we can advocate in the legislature or in Washington DC, because this has got to stop. There's too many of these incidents that are happening every couple of months throughout the country, not just California.
No, I'd just like to thank you for your presentation and for your help with families. I've had several that we've gotten in contact with you, and you've got them some good help, so very appreciative of the services you do on a daily basis. Thank you very much.
I got a general question for all three of you, Luanne, Darcy, and Jacob. Now, wasn't so bad, was it? I don't know, are you done? Thank you very much, the presentation. Hey, we're going to take a couple items out of order. We have a couple of quick ones to present. Neil, if you would, we're going to take item number forty-four, a request from our parks grounds to receive a direction or ongoing emergency drought water conservation efforts. Neil?
Good morning, members of the board, Chair, County Council. Tulare County Parks consists of about three hundred and eighty-four acres of turf. We have a couple of parks that we don't really have any turf in to worry about, meaning Balch Park and Kings River Park. But the balance of our parks has a significant amount, primarily that's Bermuda grass, common Bermuda, it's a warm-seasoned turf. It requires about sixty percent of what people normally think of grass needing for irrigation. In the grounds for the Tulare County facilities, we have about sixty-six acres of irrigated turf. And of that, about twenty-five acres of it is cool-seasoned turf, which would be perennial rye grass or turf tolfescue. The cool-seasoned grasses require forty percent more than the Bermuda grass that we have in the parks for the rest of the county facilities. In an effort to be proactive, the parks and grounds has reduced irrigation by about fifty percent. This is a little bit more than what the city of Visalia was requesting. They've requested that we reduce by thirty percent. Due to the nature of the drought crisis that we're in, we feel that it's very important to reduce as much as we can. We are watering our trees and trying to make sure that we don't lose trees, and so, but there are other areas where we have that are strictly turf that we're not watering at all, or a small amount to keep the irrigation system serviceable. These areas are primarily common Bermuda in the parks department, but we do have some cool-seasoned grasses in the county grounds that by cutting that water back during the summer, we will probably kill off eighty to ninety percent of that. So either next fall, if it looks like we're going to have a wet winter, we may reseed and continue with the cool-seasoned grass, or we may work on transitioning that to warm-seasoned grasses so that in the future, we're limiting the amount of water that's necessary for various sites. To give you an idea of what that means, we're probably, to date, we've probably saved around a hundred and two acre feet of water in the parks. We've saved about twenty-two acre feet of water in the grounds, and that's the amount of water it would take to cover one acre, one foot deep in water. Some of the things we do want to look at as we go forward, looking at grant opportunities or ways to improve our irrigation systems in both the parks and the grounds. We saw a significant reduction in the amount of water necessary at Mooney Grove when we put in the new system. We saw better coverage of turf, we saw good response from our trees, and we saw a reduction in the amount of water used. So the only way to accomplish that is with a more water-efficient newer system, but like everything else, those new systems are expensive. What probably would be a good idea to better communicate with the various communities that our parks are in is to set up signs that let people know what it is we're doing and why this has occurred. Suggestion is Tulare County has reduced irrigation by fifty percent. This will result in a hundred and ninety million dollar water savings during the drought. Please do your part to conserve the water. Please do your part to conserve the water. So we're here today to receive direction from the board and move forward.
One of the things, I'll, you allow me to jump in first. One of the things I've noticed when we first started talking about this, we planted a lot of seedlings and the planters, and just when we were getting the most press about water issues, all of our flowers were two feet high and beautiful, and people were asking me, why are we planting all of our planters full of these flowers that take lots of water? And you told me they're at the end of their life. So I was happy to hear that. So for me, just for the sake of conserving water, I don't mind seeing our flower beds with no flowers in them right now. That's just me.
Kind of, to give you an idea, Government Plaza, we're removing all the snaps, and so it looks kind of bare. The beds that are in the front of the board here are bare now. As you look along the side, that's actually a fairly drought tolerant planting. There's lantana, there's crepe minerals, it's very low water. Even with the low water that they receive, they're going to continue to flower and continue to look good. And so there's various sites we're looking at implementing, not necessarily extreme drought tolerant plantings and cactus, but things that will look appropriate and still have a significant water savings and be a better steward.
Great. And if you do the walk back behind our office that goes around all the way to county, where county and center remain come together, those are very drought tolerant plantings, and they look great. I mean, it's very beautiful back there. So I would encourage us to do more of that in the future. Supervisor Vanderpool.
Glad to hear your walking still, Phil, even though the walking works challenge is over. Really, thank you for the presentation. I know this was something that I specifically had asked for because I'd had some constituents bringing up issues in both Alpa and in Pixley, where we do have two county parks. And, you know, I think that this year is a, appreciate the efforts to conserve water. We all know that we need to do that. And I think it's critical that we tell our story and help spread the message and increase awareness and also hopefully, public effort to conserve water during this time. But in some of these communities, these parks are all that the community really has for recreation. So I think it is very important that, you know, hopefully, while I know both parks, we don't really have fescue or any of the more highly water consuming turf there. But to put the minimal amount to keep it alive towards, it's still a destination for people in the communities to go. We should look at upgrading the irrigation infrastructure in those communities so that we can, those parks are both smaller, so that we can save water, but also do a better job of keeping the parks green or at least usable for the residents in the community. So, and then also, we should move towards some more drought tolerant landscapes specifically in those parks so that we can keep them usable for the community and for the residents, because they are very highly used if you're ever around the areas in the weekend or evenings. Just a few thoughts.
Your comments. Supervisor Woodley.
Thanks. I, my experience with Bermuda grass is I can never kill it when I want to, so it's pretty hard even withholding waters from it. But, and there is sort of a green, brown combination you can sometimes get with Bermuda. But I was going to comment on a couple of things. One is that, you know, using this opportunity to look at kind of moving forward and kind of a holistic approach, I question, I mean, there may be specific reasons for it, but I guess I question why we would have fescue and cool grass plantings. But there may be specific reasons for it, so I'm not, I'm not saying, don't ever do it. But I would think our goal would be to move away from that in the future and not go back and just replant it because we've had it there in the past unless there's a specific reason for it. And the other thing is to go to the, you use the term extreme drought cacti, but the, really, there is, as you point out, zero escaping, you know, type of plants that usually take a little water to get established. Once they're established, you take very little water. And I would think this would be a good opportunity for us to take a look at doing more of that in the future. And honestly, I know this is not the time to do it, but I would like to see us do, look at more landscaping like that among other parts of our county facilities. Where currently, we have no landscaping. I was thinking of the road yard out at Levers Lane, where, you know, this is a major county operation with no landscaping. And I just think that, you know, that we've made a major investment out there, and we will continue to make major investments out there, and I think it should look presentable to the public. It should be something which we showcase. And really, wire fencing and bare dirt just don't really do that. So I'd like to see us look at, you know, not now, not during the drought time, but as you look forward, going into the future, of doing more of this kind of zero escaping type of landscaping for all of our county facilities. And then avoid using high water use type of plants, be they turf or be they other flowers. I appreciate the fact of having spot color. I realize that it takes water, but it's, you can accomplish a lot. And I think we've done that. You look at the, you can go to Government Plaza, that little spot when you come in the front there. Yes, it takes a lot of water, more water for those annual plantings, but they deliver a lot of beauty, and it's in a very small area. So I don't know that we want to say, don't ever do that again in the future, but I appreciate what you've done, Neil, because I think that's exactly, you've done exactly what I think we wanted to do. And the other thing is that you were commenting on the need, you know, we can do continual conservation by improving our system, our water delivery system. But you also pointed about how much money we're saving by just curtailing. So I would like to see it, looking at maybe sort of using some of those savings, if you will, to sort of help pay for, and I think it's appropriate use of our capital funds that we have to be devoted to these things so that we can continue to reduce our water consumption, but at the same time, have good coverage and make our grounds, you know, attractive to the public. Those are some of my comments.
Thoughts, Supervisor Sheehan?
Up in Three Rivers, the Red Bud Society, and we've, they've landscaped the post office and a couple other facilities. I think they're good examples of drought tolerant native plants. The Sequoia Riverlands Trust used to have a nursery. I don't know if they still have it.
Still do.
But those are plants that we could replace existing plants with. I can tell you for a fact, I had a lawn that I took out for 10 years. And soon as I put a lawn back in it, Bermuda came back. And I sprayed it with Roundup. So, I mean, Bermuda, to me, will always come back, no matter what you do to it.
Well, that's what I've got, Bermuda grass, because I like to, I like the off-season and in the winter where I don't have to mow it every week. But, you know, you can go out and when you put your pre-emergent down, it's just some green dye, and spray it, and everybody thinks your lawn's green. So that's kind of where I am. But no, I'm with the old Bermuda grass.
Dean?
I tell you this all the time, Neil, the grounds are great, and they've never looked as good as they do now. I know it's, I know it's a challenge during the drought year, but, you know, the grounds reflect, you know, the working condition environment that we want, we have our employees in, and they look fantastic. So keep up the good work.
We have a strong crew. Thank you.
One of the, I just, there was an article I just read, I guess it was this morning, about the state Capitol and their efforts to deal with water situation. And one of it is water systems, protecting the trees, the shrubs, and so forth. But one other thing would be, and I know we do some of this, but we might want to look at extending it more, and that is using more compost, more material on the soil to hold that moisture in, and working with, you know, our waste folks to the extent that that's available or through our contractors. A lot of cities do these kinds of things that keeps the weeds, you know, Neil, keeps the weeds down, holds the moisture in, enriches the soil, keeps it from compacting, there's a lot of benefits. And, you know, we might want to become a little more intentional about that.
For years, I've called Neil when they've been planting things out here in the back entrance and told them to please stop planting flowers in the back entrance because there's only six people that use it. And I want to thank you for not planting anything back there for a couple of years now. So thank you, Neil. We do, you've received direction from the board. We do need a motion to receive the presentation and the direction that was given to Neil today.
Who for approval?
Second. By Ennis, second by Sheehan.
Do you want to ask him what we recommend?
Did you hear what we recommended?
Yes, sir.
I think the message is a lot.
I have clear direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now I'll take up item number 25. I have a short presentation in regards to Central Valley Next Generation Broadband. Mr. Coyne.
This is an exciting project that we got involved with in, I think, 2009 at the CAO's direction. This was an opportunity to partner with a public-private organization that went out successfully for a $67 million package stimulus project with some local cost share. And with us today is Mike Stewart. He's a sales manager, major domo for the Central Valley Next Generation Project, Vast Communications. Basically, what we did, we took stimulus money, we took an application for an 18-county project that they brought to us for the board support. When it was funded, we looked to how could we wring every dollar value out of our portion? And I'm proud to say that with the county's leadership, we were able to complete our portion first, to be very aggressive. CVIN made an extraordinary commitment to the CAO that all the cost savings they put into additional build-out. Our piece of this project was about $14 million. So that funding, $10 million came from the California Public Utilities Commission for your phone bills, about $10 million from the Central Valley Independent Network, that is a consortium of seven private phone companies, including our Terabella Phone Company. That resulted in the $14 million build-out. The major focus we put on this was to connect anchor institutions. That was the public value for this. Universities, schools, colleges, and, you know, to also make it available to our business communities in our cities and our communities where business and the public could tap into it. This connected quite a few of our major towns. We did everything we could to string them in along the route. We also added a substantial number of communities. Getting back to the priority of connecting schools and libraries, as this came along with the stimulus funding, Mike and the people behind him began working with schools immediately to network with E-Rate and how could they hook in as many schools along the route as possible. And to date, if you count these all up, there's about 17 schools, in some cases districts with multiple schools that have connected in. The colleges have been connected, and the hub to service all these schools is at the County Office of Education. We also were able to turn around and to hook into businesses such as Sett and Pistachio as it passed through Terabella. It was a short hookup to increase the broadband in a major business, a major employer in an underserved area. And just for that business, it took them from basically a dial-up line, which was the best, well, they had a little better dial-up. They had a basic DSL line, and they could go to the same level that you see for UC Irvine. This is an example of how efficient CVIN was in trying to take these loops and connect schools. This little map, and in your packet, you have, I think, 17 maps, area maps. This little map shows where we connected seven schools, just in the Cutler-Orosi area, and just off to the side, just past Munson, they've since gone out to Traver. So they've really been able to leverage this as they pass through these areas. And these schools are up and running. We were very proud that we were able to get Munson-Sultana up, that whole district, before any of the other counties got lit up. So kudos to you. Not that he's playing favorites with Tulare County. What's next? We, the system is live. July 1st, let me see if I can remember all this. July 1st, they're going to double the level of service to TCO, to 2 gigabytes per second. And is that correct? Where are you?
No, actually, the grant provided two 1-gigabit connections to the Tulare County Office of Education. As of July 1st, we're upgrading that to two 10-gig connections. And so they're going to have a ton of bandwidth to continue to distribute to all of these schools. You know, all the schools that Eric showed and listed up, those were not grant-funded, those construction projects. Those are projects that we've added on after the grant to continue to leverage this network to reach out to schools and businesses. And Tulare County has just been very supportive, great place to do business, very business-friendly for us. There's a lot of communities that, you know, we struggled with the permitting process, but Tulare County has just been very logical. They'll sit down and, you know, you guys have been willing to talk to us when we had an issue or disagreement over permit requirements or anything else. You guys worked with us, and we always found a quick resolution, and so we certainly appreciate the support and the effort of the Board of Supervisors and all of the staff at Tulare County. They've been, you know, probably one of the easiest places for us to do business. And so that's part of the reason that you see the growth in Tulare County. We haven't done that in any other, any other counties at this point. You know, we focused, you know, on Tulare because it's the greatest need, and it was a very business-friendly place to do business. And so we appreciate everything.
Part of those efficiencies, oh, sorry.
I was going to ask a question. In the report, they were talking about the wireless technology having changed. I wonder if you can give some kind of a prognosis for the future, because I guess they were kind of stymied at this point, unless someone's going to actually have cable directly to their business, the ability to use wireless system is kind of put on hold for a period of time.
Well, as far as the grant funding of the wireless network, we did speed tests and evaluated. There's kind of a shift in technology going on in that wireless business, going from YMAX to something called LTE. YMAX has kind of limited speeds. You're going to get, you know, 3 to 6 meg type of connection. LTE can offer faster, but it's just not readily available for providers to purchase. Many of the cell companies, you know, are taking a lot of that equipment. And so that technology is kind of maturing, and until it gets to a point where we feel like that's not going to be a wasted investment, you know, we think that most customers would outgrow that within a year or two of, you know, making a substantial investment in a YMAX technology. And so we're just continuing to evaluate it. There are a lot of wireless providers in the areas. You know, we're working to get them lower-cost broadband so that they can continue to expand their systems. But, you know, for us internally, we're not going to make that leap into the wireless side of it until, you know, we're comfortable that those, the speeds that we can deliver, you know, are going to be enough for people to, you know, stream Netflix and do all the things that they want to do on that connection, you know, over the next, you know, four or five years, or at least the life of that equipment. And so...
Without committing yourself, and any guesstimate about when you think that might become available?
I think you're probably looking, you know, 12 to 24 months before that equipment matures and the manufacturers get to the point to where it's readily available. And so, you know, we'll continue to evaluate that as, you know, new equipment comes out. But once the equipment's released, we do kind of vigorous testing on it. And so it does take a little bit of time for us to, you know, verify what they say it will do is what it will actually do, because those typically tend to be very different.
There are, I'm glad you mentioned the permit process, because this was a new direction for the county. And this is something that hadn't been done on this scale before. And this was an opportunity, RMA partnered with the CAO, and we came up with a new process that saved a million dollars in cost savings on this project alone on the installation. And they reinvested that elsewhere. The other thing is, you talked about wireless, where LTE is going in very aggressively, our associate director stepped out. But I know that we have permitted, I mean, an unprecedented number of wireless towers for LTE and GDM, I'm going to pass that test, whatever the old technology is, in the last year. And we'll continue to look at that. One more very exciting thing, and Mike is being intentionally a little bit vague about this to preserve a competitive advantage. This was forward-thinking to apply for this grant. And frankly, they brought this opportunity to us, to the CAO, and we jumped right on it with our cities. We are now looking at what can we do next, you know, because the only problem we have with this since is we'd like to add another 30, 40 communities to this. Mike's organization has been putting together... Mike's organization has been putting together an application for something called Connect America, and these are, you saw the PUC funds, there's major federal funding that's available. And if they're successful, it would be a multimillion-dollar grant that would seek to connect some of our, a large portion of our more rural communities, and would just extend this. And so, we hope to be able to come back in the coming months, not too long, to ask for some support and see what we could do to kind of get the ball in the end zone on that project.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take up our first addenda item, request from Solid Waste to approve and authorize an extension agreement number 25, or 24503.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Bryce Howard, Director of Solid Waste. Staff is requesting the extension of Agreement 24503-C. We're in the process of working through some contract language. It's a little more robust contract, a little more defined, wouldn't use the word tighter, but more defined, so that both parties understand what they're getting into. It's taken a little longer for us to work through County Council and our selected vendor, or our preferred sort of vendor so far, to bring it to you. We'd like another 60 days to work through that process, so we'd like an extension of the existing agreement for another 60 days.
Glad you added the days on there, thank you. Any questions? Entertaining motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Wordley. Second by Ennis. Cast your votes. There you go. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number, addenda item number two, request from RMA, submit a for State Water Resources Control Board application.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, CAO, County Council, good morning. Mike Bond, RMA, Public Works. Thank you for including this urgent item on your agenda today. The county is responsible for Seville's Community Water System, and which I think everyone is aware, it's in receivership. There are many problems with this system that are being addressed literally on a daily basis, and efforts are underway to ultimately replace this system. So, we're working on a project currently that would connect the system to Yatom, find a new water supply, and replace the entire distribution system in Seville. But in the interim, we're dealing with a number of issues there. We've had to issue on May 30th a boil water order that's essentially will be continuous until we get some relief here. So, the water vending machine is one of two things we're looking at, and the water vending machine is before you today. The other one is a storage option at the well site, so we'll hopefully be bringing something else to you as well for consideration. The water vending machine, we've worked closely with the Community Water Center and the Roman Catholic Bishop of Fresno to identify a site that's suitable for this, and worked closely with CAO's office to develop this project. It's expanded a little bit because we needed to add additional storage for this. A couple of clarifications, if I may. The boil water notice actually went out on May 30th, so, not the 28th, and the storage capacity that we're looking at for the water vending machine is 500 gallons. We're looking at a much larger storage for another project that we'll bring to you. So, with that, we're requesting that the Board approve our request for seeking funding for this.
Any questions?
Sure, I don't have a question. First, I wanted to make a public thank you to the Diocese of Fresno for making their property available to us. It's a piece of property that's in the community, it's already fenced, and it's a very, it's not perhaps the best place to be in terms of where the public is, but it is a very good place, and they've made it available to us at no charge. So, I want to thank the public, publicly thank the Diocese. Community Water Center folks have been very active in this process, and what we had before was a system that only had a 40-gallon tank capacity, and most people would be coming up there probably bringing two and three Carboys, five gallons apiece, and would very rapidly exhaust that capacity. So, this will give us additional storage capacity, and the system can generate the water overnight when people aren't using it. So, it should be, I think, more than adequate for the community, and so it's a much better system. I want to thank Mike Bond for taking the time to kind of examine this thing from top to bottom and making this recommendation. I think it's a very good one, and it's not going to hold up the process, we believe, and that's important to me, to make sure we move forward. So, if there are no further questions, I would move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. By Wordley, second by Shep. Before we vote, Ms. Bond, in the agenda item, did I see any mention of a revolving fund loan?
No, this is fully funded, it's a competitive grant, but it would be no match.
Great, thank you. Cast your votes. It's unanimous, thank you.
Probably change the outcome of the vote right there.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if someone wants to talk to this?
I didn't see you raise your hand or wave any, I'm sorry.
My name is Becky Quintana. We're at 15524 Avenue 381 in Seville. I just want to thank you today for moving forward on this urgent water crisis that we have in our community. Again, the Catholic Diocese stepped up to actually, I guess, for a dollar a year or something to give us some water, but I just wanted to share a little bit about my experience just in the last week, taking showers and being left in the shower with soap all over my body. But the fact is that, you know, we've been buying our drinking water, but a lot of us people have swamp coolers, and a lot of the elderly with no water in their swamp cooler, they're unable to keep their water, their homes, especially during this hot days. And of course, everybody's excited, they heard about what the county's trying to do, and most of them couldn't be here, but I just wanted to personally thank you for your efforts in helping our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, I also like to thank Community Water for their efforts in this, and Maria This is going to probably happen in other areas that we have in Tulare County, and there is money available. So, as soon as we have an issue with one of these communities, let's get on it as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
Maria Herrera, I'm a resident here of Visalia at 101 and Soul Street, and also work with Community Water Center, and I am just here to just thank the county for your leadership on this and for acting swiftly on getting assistance to the community, both for the interim project, but also, as was mentioned earlier, the county's also working on addressing the water shortages right now that are really impacting, you know, our residents there, my father included. I wanted to make one note, if this project moves forward and gets funded and implemented, it would be the first project in the state that would actually fund a vending machine. So, Tulare County really is paving the way and creating models that can be replicated in other areas. I just wanted to acknowledge the county for taking that leadership. Thank you.
Maria, Mr. Chairman, Maria, 4 o'clock tomorrow works for me.
Anyone else on this item? Okay, CNN will move to our item number 43.
Good morning, Debbie Vaughn, County Administrative Office.
Will you pull that microphone around to you, please? There you go, thank you.
Before you, you have a request provides direction to staff as to which, if any, of the two listed options you would, for staff to pursue with regards to medical marijuana ordinance revision. And then, of course, there's always the option to modify one of the existing choices or to add something completely new. So, the first option is to ban all cultivation of medical marijuana, whether by an individual or a collective or cooperative, and that would be current or prospective. And the second option is to ban all medical marijuana collectives or cooperatives, current or prospective, and allow individual cultivation only. So, just as a little bit of background, the current medical marijuana regulations are outlined in three different areas, two areas of the ordinance code and one in the Tulare County zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinance sections 511 through 5111040 are the sections that govern the cultivation. The next section is in Section 6, and that governs the operation of collectives and cooperatives. That section does include a licensing provision. The county has not implemented the licensing provision to date specifically because of a case with the city of Long Beach where their licensing scheme was held to be in conflict with Federal Substance Controlled Act, Federal Controlled Substance Act, excuse me. And also Mendocino County experienced a great deal of difficulty with their permitting process, with the federal government coming in and subpoenaing their records. And then, the last section is the Tulare County zoning ordinance, and that just identifies the locations where cooperatives can be placed. So, if you'll recall, your Board on April 23rd of 2013 enacted an Ordinance Number 3398, which was adopted and extended an interim ordinance, which put a ban on any expansion or new addition of collectives or cooperatives through March 18th of 2015. And that was to allow staff and County Council to review options that were available to the county during that time. Since that time, the Live Oak case has been upheld by the California Supreme Court, which essentially means that Council's interpretation is that jurisdictions can ban cultivation within their area of influence. A couple of things to point out, under Option 1, the Board, staff would request that the Board provided some direction on phase-out. There are three existing businesses, two in the Goshen area and one east of Visalia, that are currently operating under all the conditions except for the licensing provision. And again, that's because the county has not chosen to implement that portion. Also, under Option Number 1, the proposed ordinance change would modify the enforcement procedures. Landowners would have, property owners would have 10 days to abate their property. They could request an appeal, a hearing, excuse me, a hearing during that time regarding the abatement, and then after abatement, property owners could also request an appeal, a hearing to appeal the fines that might be administered. The current proposal is that the fines would amount to $1,000 per day, or if the Board would like to select another option. The other thing under Option Number 1 is that, oh, sorry about that, that's the same thing. That's just the point, that they can request a hearing to challenge the cost of the abatement if they want. The change there is that currently that hearing is automatic, but there's a lot of parties that don't show up to the hearing. So, this would make the hearing a request by the property owners. Under Option Number 2, that would allow individual cultivation. It would be allowed in any of the zones. The recommendation would be that there would be, and this goes off the Board's prior direction, that there would be either a limitation to the plant count, or that it'd be limited to square footage, like, for example, in the city of Visalia, it's 12 square feet. Or you could do it on plant count, like 12 plants, six plants. It would be for a individual use, qualified patient or primary caregivers only, and people would have to have the permission of the owner of the property if they were not themselves the property owner. The rest of the ordinance would follow the ordinance that's currently in place, meaning that marijuana would have to be cultivated in a manner that was not visible from the street, properly secured, didn't affect neighboring properties, couldn't be close, you know, to sensitive zones. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, we're going to, I do have one request for a comment during this item. We're going to take public comments, and then we are going to adjourn to closed session to discuss the matter with our legal counsel there. Anybody? I do have a request from Sheila Gonzalez. And while you're coming forward, do you want to remind folks that we are talking about the unincorporated parts of Tulare County? We do not have jurisdiction inside of the city limits. We are talking about unincorporated Tulare County. You can use that one. So, please, name and address for the record.
My name is Sheila Gonzalez, and I live at 2233 East Pershing Court here in Visalia. I consider myself a conservative, I voted already. I'm here today because yesterday evening I saw in the paper about this meeting. In part, it says, "The Board has long expressed an interest in restricting medical marijuana here." My hope is that you guys don't have preconceived intent on the issue, that you are keeping an open mind and an open heart, and that's why I'm here, to share with you exactly how this may impact me and my daughter. My daughter became very ill when she was 12 years old. It took about three years and a lot of testing to get a diagnosis. She has fibromyalgia, and she has DID, which is called this associative identity disorder. Please forgive me, I'm nervous. And during the course of the time that she was being evaluated and the diagnoses were forthcoming, and up until she was 18, she was on many medications, prescriptions through various doctors and Children's Hospital. The result was that she, at times, had seizures because of these medications, she became further depressed, totally lost hope because she was in chronic pain. One day, she talked to me about how she had found that marijuana had helped her symptoms. She'd totally given up hope on any other kind of medication. She'd experienced some really bad things with prescription meds. And I told her that in order to have that in her home, it needed to be legal, she needed to get a doctor to prescribe it, and she did. DID is a personality disorder that happened to my daughter because of early childhood trauma and the intense pain that she's constantly in. She lives with me now, she's 20 years old. She has her card, and she's, works with a collective. Part of that, the majority of the reason behind that is we both have brown thumbs. I couldn't help her if I wanted to. There's no guarantee that if we planted something, if we could, that it would grow and meet her needs. A second, it puts the responsibility on somebody else. We don't have that in our home. We're not vulnerable for break-ins and things like that because people smell that or know that it's on our property. And another reason that I wanted to speak today is because I rent, I rent a townhouse, and I can't grow there for my daughter, my daughter can't grow there. I live paycheck to paycheck, I can't afford to move. I live currently in a place where I feel safe, my daughter feels safe, and if this were to pass, in order for her to meet her medical needs and remain healthy and positive and productive, we would have to move. I can't do that. Well, thank you for listening to me.
See, we do have a three-minute clock listed. If you, we won't start the clock until you say your name.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. My name's Douglas Hurt, I'm a local attorney, I've practiced in Tulare County for about 30 years. My office is right across the street. I'm the attorney for CCIC. As far as I know, it is the only legally operating collective in the county, and I've worked with County Council really for the last number of years, directly with their attorneys, making sure that my client is in compliance. And I'm a little concerned with the idea of just banning it altogether. I do have an anecdotal story, about 20 years ago, my mother died of bone cancer, which is one of the most painful that one can get, and in her foraging around her house, she found an old joint from my adventures in 1968 when I was a teenager and smoked it. And it was one of the only things that took her out of pain, so I took it upon myself to get her marijuana so that she could at least have some comfort with something other than morphine as she passed. So, I know... So I know personally, intimately, the, the positive benefits of this. But CC, the, the problem, I also do significant criminal defense and have for, again, about thirty years. And the problem, if we start banning everything, one, it's contrary to the entire tide in the country. If you put it in one place, regulate it, make sure it's in the right zoning, they pay taxes significantly every month, sales taxes, they make sure everybody has a license, it takes it out of the criminal element. And what happens is underground. I analogize it to trying stopping this from, it's like trying to squeeze water in your hand. It gets out, and it makes it criminal and makes it more dangerous in my, my experience and observation. It connects people who legally smoke marijuana to people who use cocaine and methamphetamine and that sort of thing, and it becomes dangerous. And I really encourage the county to at least let the place that is doing it properly, that doesn't have any problems, that has it out, anytime there's any change or question, I call county council, say, "What do we do? How do we stay in compliance? How do we make it safe?" They follow the state guidelines to the letter. I make them do that as their attorney. And I really encourage the county. It, it sounds like we would be taking a step backwards. I understand that Tulare County is, I'm watching the clock. I feel like I'm at a basketball game with a twenty-four second clock here. Growing large quantities, shipping it back east for sales, that's a big problem, no question, to states where it's not legal. But I really encourage the county to at least formulate this in some way so that it can be in compliance with state law, done above board, pay their taxes, and still provide the service to those who really need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Please step forward and...
My name's Becky Quintana. I'm from Seville. Just wanted to share a little bit the experience that our community has encountered with people growing marijuana. As you know, we have a shortage of water. We have a lot of people from LA, from out of town, coming into our communities, renting out lots, taking our water, and, you know, this is like in my back, my back door. And it's really a problem where you get people from out of town, you know, they have their license posted up there, and I don't know, when somebody gets a license, they're supposedly allowed ninety-nine plants per license. But, you know, ninety-nine plants is a lot of plants. My daughter, right now, is facing stage four breast cancer, and she's been on morphine. She wanted to try the marijuana. I said, "Okay, do you really want to try it? You get off the morphine, go smoke the marijuana." I went with her. We bought it. She smoked it, and I said, "I want you to tell me how it's affecting you, if it's taking your pain away." And she tried it. It didn't do anything for her. But every bo, every human body's different. You know, the morphine works for her, you know, even though she's on a hundred milligrams every twelve hours, that's what's keeping her alive as for now. But as for letting everybody grow marijuana, it's just really out of control. I mean, it's, it's near our schools, you know, you can, the kids are walking right by there, they can smell it. The man that was speaking earlier, the attorney, I'm sure that, you know, there's some people that need it, people that have cancer, but I think ninety-nine plants per, per license is kind of a lot. And another thing that I did, an investigation when this all started, is I called the county, and I said, "When they come and apply for their license, do you keep track as to where they're going to grow it?" She says, "No, we just give them the license, and they can go grow it anywhere." I said, "But there should be some kind of regulations that when you get a license, you should let the county know exactly where you're going to be growing your plants so they can be monitored as well." But as for the rural communities, it's, it's a really big problem, and that's something that we really need to, to look at. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you can just pull it right on down.
Hi. My name is Sandra Lambert. I'm in District Four over in Ivanhoe. I'm in the same boat as the first lady was with her daughter. I have fifth stage fibromyalgia. What they gave me to help me with this was Lyrica, which gave me seizures, made me depressed, and also made it where a woman pushed me, and I'm a martial arts specialist, and I almost killed her. I was so out of control on this medication. I also have seven shattered discs in my back from an accident. I have cushions, and I have croons. They give me morphine seven times a day. It is destroying my liver, my kidneys, and my pancreas. Two years ago, four of my doctors sat down, talked to me, asked me to try this marijuana. I do not smoke it. I do not have a pipe or anything that, it's made into a medicine for me. It's made into a cream. If you see my back right here, it's very swollen. It's almost like mustard plaster that's put on there, and it soaks in. It does not make me high. It does help my appetite, where when they gave me the OxyContin, I, my stomach started bleeding. I was throwing up all the time. I couldn't take that. Dilaudid, it helps a little bit, but again, it's hurting my liver. I had a permit for ninety-nine plants. The lady that was just speaking, she doesn't understand that when you're breaking it down and you're making it into a medicine, ninety-nine plants is not very much because what is this much, once it's broken down, becomes this much, and it lasts about five months. I had it in two greenhouses. I had locks, I had fences, I had security and cameras. I'm at the end of Ivanhoe, so I'm surrounded by orchards, bothering nobody. I'm fighting for my life. I don't know what to do. I'm two, I'm sixty-five years old. They're not going to give me a liver transplant at that age. Plus, I don't have the money. I'm on social security. I don't even get eight hundred dollars a month. Growing it myself, I give it to a man that is a pharmacist. His mother has MS. He has a federal grant to make it into medicine. So with me growing it myself, giving it to him, I fluctuate the costs. If I go to a collective, I can't afford it because they give me a little bag, and it's costing me a hundred dollars, and it's not enough to break down to do anything. I'm asking for help. I tried to contact you, Mr. Worley. I'd love to have a meeting with you. I also have a hundred and seventy-five people that are in the same boat that I'm in, that it's, it's medical, it's, no one wants to get high. We're just trying to save our lives and be able to get up and walk each day, or just have a normal life, which a lot of the medicines that are out there, like the morphine, you, you take it, you go to sleep. Your day is gone. You're not having a life, and it's not a life worth living. And I'm asking for help. I'm asking to please allow me to grow on the five acres that I have. I take security with it. I have never so much as sold a leaf, and as I said, I do not smoke it, so I am not high. It is a medicine. And I would love to have a meeting with you, sir, if possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, also, there was a news article in the Fresno Bee on Saturday that the Senate and Congress, sixty-one percent Republicans and more Democrats, are passing to approve marijuana in other states. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Roger Southfield, four-twenty-six Channing Way, Exeter, California. I'm sure I'm no stranger to you. Again, I've got some great news, though. I've been conversing with the federal government, our state government, that approved my program. They welcome it, but I need to get to cooperation with my council here in my county because the city of Porterville is allowing me to open my center up. I don't want any misunderstanding of what my intent is. I'm trying to educate the public before they have a better way of judging such an ordinance that you have put before you. I'm working with the city to be able to train and educate the city so they're more aware of what my needs are and other people like myself are, to be more fairly, be able to be prepared to judge it in a more proper manner, knowing what our true needs are. With these two proposals that are here before you, I don't know if you received my copy that I have given to you yesterday. I would like you to have an opportunity before voting on either one of those, to take a look at my program first. I hate to even say this, but I think we should ban everything the way it is going right now. It's totally out of control. It's getting into the U.S.'s hands, and because of that, I'm unable to medicate now. I've talked to the ASLU, who is filing a civil suit against Fresno County, and they asked me to join in against Tulare County, which I replied, "No." I don't think we should have to come into a civil matter. All I'm asking for is to be put on the agenda, to be able to go through my program in a proper manner and thoroughly, and then come back with objective questions that you think this program won't work. It's amazing how our federal government, with a short amount of time that I discussed it with them, approved my program. I'm asking my county to take a real strong look at it before I open the doors in Porterville. I think it's a great center that we could take all of our city staff even, to send them there to understand marijuana at a much level than a person that needs it. And then they could fairly, as infrastructure for our counties and our cities, be able to judge us fairly. One of my programs that I'm offering in within it, you'll see, is a par code system that I recommend that anything, anybody that wants to grow anything, is issued a set of numbers that are, go through the whole system from the time it's grown until its time is consumed. Law enforcement will have no problem at any time, knowing where that marijuana came from. It's a way of controlling, it's a way of rationalizing, and more than anything else, a way of getting funds that we're spending wastefully right now trying to stop it. I'm proposing also in my plan, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars per hundred cardholders per a city. Palm Springs now has sent me out an application to go ahead and open the first center in Palm Springs, which now they've closed everything down, their three dispensaries also, because the city attorney and I talked about it, about the fact that it was out of control, and the only way you can get control again is start it up together as a whole, not leaving one of the entities out and trying to make a decision on our own how it should be ran, but get the input from the user also. I think this would be a proper way to go ahead and approach this, in a diplomatic way, a smart way, being educated first before we make any more decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board this time? Sir, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Weston Fox. I live at fifteen thirty-four South Grant Street in Visalia. I work at CCIC in Goshen, where the dispensary that is open at the moment. I'm just kind of here, I just wanted to talk about my job. I've been there for six years now, almost seven. I hear stories like the ladies every day, people that have fibromyalgia, cancer, a lot of end-of-life stories that, you know, they get to you, you know. I don't want to hear, have to hear people telling me that they're asking their college friends if they can find it on the streets. I mean, if it goes back to it, I mean, it's going to turn into a, I'm nervous, sorry. Yeah, we're just, we're, we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that we're heard and that, you know, the director, Tammy, isn't here right now because her father is in, having cancer treatments where she's at. So she couldn't be here to speak herself, but she definitely wanted everyone to know that we are here. We've been operating for close to seven years, as much as we can comply. I have hundreds of people, it's every day that I have to hear someone that's dying of cancer or just, you know, going through Dilaudid or morphine, and their livers are shot, or a ninety-year-old woman that, you know, was getting oregano from her cousin, you know, and just stories like that. And we have lab results. We have those creams at our place, too. I mean, just different options that we can stand behind. We've been there. People trust us now that we've been there for that long, and, you know, it's a good job to have and a good feeling to have when you know you've extended someone's life or even just made it a little better for, you know, the time they, they come in and see us. So, I mean, you know, I've gotten hugs from widows and all sorts of people, so it's a pretty regular part of my job. I really like it, and that's, I think, all I really have to say. Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay, see, now, we are going to adjourn to closed session. Gene, do we want to adjourn till one o'clock? Okay, we're going to adjourn till one o'clock, so we'll come back to this item in open session one o'clock. During the lunch hour, we will be conducting closed session business. Madam...
Yes, sir. I have something to read, and then I will announce the entire closed session agenda. In regard to item F on the board's closed session agenda today, inadvertently, it is missing facts and circumstances and orally amended to read. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six point nine, subsection D, subsection two. Number of potential cases, one. Board of Supervisors' agenda item today pertaining to modification of Tulare County ordinances related to medical marijuana. In addition to item F, there are items A through I. I do not anticipate any announcements.
So... I... I didn't rest, but when I, when I woke up, I... I went, and I said, "Oh, God." And so they tried, and I'm... They finally got them shot, so... Which, with the fire panel that I have, it's, it's pretty up there. It's broken my arm. The shots are done, fractures, so... I'm... 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 Well, Michelle, did you want this one? Two, this is the one that I had counsel prepare for me that, that I read.
Debbie come back in as well?
No, okay.
I thought we were coming this way. He ran out of the room like he was ready to come back in. Steve? I didn't put my coat back on. I do want to hear that funny story, Kathleen. I do want to hear that funny story about that...
Since we're, since we're providing direction, will we, will we be making a motion?
Uh... What?
Since we're providing direction, are we writing a formal motion?
Um, that's up to your board.
Yeah. It's a motion.
You don't want, Steve, I, I don't think so, because it's...
It doesn't adopt anything.
Planning commissions, because the staff's in the building, commission, I don't think...
I agree. I agree.
Since we're providing direction, are we writing a formal motion?
That's up to your board.
It's a motion.
You don't want, Steve, I don't think so, because it's-
He doesn't adopt anything.
Planning Commission, because the staff's in the building, Planning Commission, I don't think.
I agree, I agree.
So just give direction, is that what we're doing?
Everybody nods their head that they-
Jean, is Debby coming back in? Let me, I sent Will to get her.
Did you, you sent Will where?
Yeah, so we're not gonna do that. No. You think we should?
Find her? Okay.
She thinks we should have a motion.
I was listening up, okay, that's fine, that's what you want, that's what we're doing. I always do what Michelle says, you know, anyways.
You know that saying, happy wife, happy life.
I've had three wives.
We're still learning, huh?
I haven't learned yet.
Trying to be learnt.
Are we ready?
Debby's not here. Jean, do we need to wait for Debby?
I don't think we do.
Did we all have a good lunch?
Yes, we did.
Next best thing to drugs.
What I want to, what I want to know is why didn't you bring us any? Where'd our sheriff go? I thought that was a bribe. Okay, we can turn the recording device on. We're back in open session now, to continue with item number forty-three, and we'll bring it back to the board for direction to staff. I'd like to be first.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to come back with option one, ban cultivation of medical marijuana, whether individual or cooperatives, collectives, or current or prospective. So basically, it's an outright ban of marijuana in the unincorporated areas of Tulare County.
In the unincorporated areas, but that, we have no jurisdiction or control over what the incorporated cities do.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for a clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
When you say bring back, sir, do you mean start the process?
Start the process for an ordinance.
Which would, that would, that would be pressed to go first to the Planning Commission.
Right.
So it's gonna go through a whole, a whole process of due diligence.
Yes, sir, I did, and thank you, understood.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ashida. I'll second that motion. Seconded by Vanderpool, please cast your votes. And the vote is unanimous, as you understand, this will go through the process that the last ordinance did. Staff will work in an ordinance, it will go to the Planning Commission, who will have a public hearing at that point, it will be forwarded on to the board. If you have a question, I'll direct you to Mr. Spata. Okay.
Vice before the board.
That concludes our meeting, we do have an announcement out from closed session, Madam Counsel.
In the matter of Sundale Vineyards LP versus County of Tulare, all Tulare County Superior Court case number two five two five six four and two five five zero seven six. The board voted on motion of Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool, on a unanimous vote, to authorize the chairman to sign a settlement agreement between the parties. And the settlement agreement will be available from the clerk.